Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. The July 18th, 2022 Legislative Session of the Anorundal County Council is called to order. Please silence all electronic devices at this time. Please pause for the invocation and the Pledge of Allegiance, which will be led by Ms. Pickard this evening.
Thank you, Madam Chair. We look for the wisdom to administer that which is just in all policies, to have open hearts and minds, to see and hear those who are marginalized, and do our best to fight against injustices and serve our constituents. For the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Madam Secretary, please read the Ethics Statement. The Ethics Commission has asked that I advise you that under certain circumstances, members of the public may qualify as lobbyists when they testify before the county council. If so, the law requires that certain information be filed with the Ethics Commission. The Chairman of the Ethics Commission has asked that those who wish to testify in any form, review the general information on lobbying sheet located on the Ethics website under forms and publications. If there are any questions about lobbying requirements, please contact the Ethics Commission at 410-222-4413. Thank you. We will now open our invitation to audience. Madam Secretary, do we have any comments or communications on any subject not included in the printed agenda received from members of the public?
No, Madam Chair, there was nothing received ahead of time.
Thank you. If there is anyone here who wishes to speak, we did not have anyone sign up to speak ahead of time, you may come down to the table at this time. When it is your turn, state your name and address for the record, and your remarks will be limited to two minutes.
Good evening, Madam Chair and members of the County Council. My name is Michael Brown. I live in Glen Burnie, Maryland. Approximately two and a half years ago, COVID came and pretty much destroyed our way of life on a day-to-day basis. Today marks about two and a half years since it was declared a public health emergency. I come before you this evening to once again state that incorrect population data is being used by the County Health Department. There is no disclaimer on their website stating that they are using this data that is estimated from 2019. We are now in 2022. This data is three years old, and we do have the 2020 census data. That difference is nearly, is almost 8,500 residents in our community. I have asked about it numerous times to the Health Department, and the answer I get is ISRI has not updated their dataset. I have also been told that it would be confusing to constituents if we changed the denominator, AKA the population number, in the middle of showing these charts and these datas. It wouldn't be if there would be ample explanation on the Health Department's website. I would encourage that this council complete an after-action report in the response to COVID-19, so we can learn from the struggles and issues that we have faced over the last two and a half years, so they can be proved upon whenever the time comes in the future when we have to battle another contagion. As I mentioned at the January council meeting, which was the height of the biggest surge of the county's solve COVID, then the difference in the case rate was anywhere between one to three cases per 100,000. Data transparency and correct data being presented to the public is paramount for the public to understand the decisions our government is making or the lack thereof. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much. At this time, the invitation to audience is now closed. Is there any item any council member would like to place on the agenda this evening? May I have a motion that the partial reading of any bill, resolution, amendment to bill or resolution, or minutes constitutes the reading of the whole?
So moved, Councilman Pruski.
Second, Sarah Lacy.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The motion carries. Madam Secretary, please read the minutes of July 5, 2022.
Ms. Radveen.
Aye.
Seven in the affirmative, none in the negative. The motion to change the order and move Bill Number 5822 up has been passed. Minutes of Legislative Session, July 5, 2022.
Thank you. Madam Secretary, please read the title of Bill Number 58-22.
The meeting was called to order at 7:00 PM by Ms. Radveen. The invocation was followed by the Pledge of Allegiance, both led by Ms. Lacy. Bill Number 5822, An Ordnance Concerning the Issue and Sale and Delivery of Anorundal The meeting was held in the County Council Chambers of Rundle Center, Annapolis, Maryland. County, Maryland General Obligation Bonds and Bond Anticipation Notes.
Thank you. Thank you. May I have a motion to adopt the minutes of July 5, 2022? Mr. Barron, this is an admin bill.
Motion to adopt, Councilman Pruski.
You may have the floor along with your panel.
Second, Lacy.
All in favor?
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Aye.
Opposed?
Good to see everyone tonight.
The motion carries.
I have a team here.
The minutes of July 5, 2022 stand approved as read.
Many of them will be joining me at the table.
Madam Secretary, please read the titles of any bills to be introduced this evening.
Some might be hanging back. We have Karen McQuade, Ms. Peppele Tony, Carolyn McVeigh, our bond counsel, Mr. Hen
Bill Number 7622, An Ordnance Concerning Licenses and Registrations, Massage Therapy
and Mr. Gregory, and from our office of law, Ms. Lori Blair-Klausmeyer, if there are any
Establishments. Bill Number 7722, An Ordnance Concerning Boards, Commissions, and Similar Bodies, Youth Advisory
other legal questions. So, as you will recall from the January 5 meeting, Bill 5822 is the annual bond ordinance. We bring this ordinance before you every year, and it conforms with the budget that
There are no resolutions, Madam Chair.
was passed back in June. Last meeting, we amended the bill to make sure that it conformed with the budget, the
...the rules to hear and vote on Bill Number 58-22 out of order this evening.
past FY23 budget, and update some language in the ordinance to conform with state law.
So moved, Lacy.
Second, Councilman Pruski.
Ms. Lacy.
We ask that you pass the bill this evening, and I have our experts here if you have any
Aye.
Ms. Pickard.
Aye.
Mr. Volkey.
Aye.
questions.
Mr. Pruski.
Thank you.
Aye.
Ms. Fiedler.
Are there any questions from the council?
Aye.
Ms. Hare.
All right, seeing none, we will now open the public hearing on Bill Number 58-22 as amended. Madam Secretary, did we receive any testimony from members of the public on this bill?
We did not receive anything ahead of time, Madam Chair.
Thank you. We also did not have anyone signed up to testify at this meeting ahead of time, but if there is anyone who wishes to speak on this bill, you may come up to this table and have a seat. When it is your turn, you may state your name and address for the record, and you will have two minutes. Seeing no motion in the audience, the public hearing on Bill Number 58-22 as amended is now closed. Madam Secretary, please read the title of Bill Number 58-22 as amended.
Bill Number 5822, An Ordnance Concerning the Issue and Sale and Delivery of Anorundal County, Maryland General Obligation Bonds and Bond Anticipation Notes.
Any further discussion? Madam Secretary, please call the roll on Bill Number 58-22.
Ms. Lacy.
Aye.
Ms. Pickard.
Aye.
Mr. Volkey.
Aye.
Mr. Pruski.
Aye.
Ms. Fiedler.
Aye.
Ms. Hare.
Aye.
Ms. Radveen.
Aye.
Seven in the affirmative, none in the negative. Bill Number 5822 has been passed.
Thank you. Madam Secretary, and thank you to the panel for being here tonight, even though we've had a chance to discuss this bill, so I think we were already set. So we appreciate your willingness to come and inform us.
Thank you. Appreciate you. Talk later. Good night.
Good night. All right, let's see. Madam Secretary, please read the title of Bill Number 57-22 as amended.
Bill Number 5722, An Ordnance Concerning Zoning, Nurseries with Landscaping and Plant Sales.
Thank you. This is, Ms. Hare and Ms. Fiedler are the lead sponsors on this bill, so you may have the floor. Ms. Hare.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Jessica Hare, District 7. I'll be super quick. We've discussed this a number of times. This bill changes the definition of, or clarifies the definition of nurseries with landscaping and plant sales to make it crystal clear that folks can grow these plants in containers as well as directly in the ground, and helps clarify the accessory retail sales as well, giving these businesses kind of the flexibility that they need to be able to provide the services or the sales that they do to their communities. We've had a lot of testimony on this. I don't know if there's any other questions, but please pass this bill tonight.
Thank you. Mr. Barron, would you like to respond?
Happy to. I'll echo many of the councilwoman's comments. As we noted, we've discussed 5722 a couple of times now. The admin, Ms. Miller and Ms. Rhodes worked hard to make sure that our concerns were incorporated and appreciate the work of the sponsors on us all coming together and making some progress for our local businesses. Please pass this bill tonight.
Thank you. Any questions from my colleagues before we open the public hearing? All right, seeing no lights. We will now open the public hearing on Bill Number 57-22 as amended. Madam Secretary, do we have any testimony received from members of the public?
No, Madam Chair, we did not receive anything.
We also, oh, no, I apologize. We do have a person signed up. We will now invite members of the audience who signed up beforehand to address the council on Bill Number 63-22 as amended. When your name is called, please come down to the table, have a seat, state your name and address for the record, and your remarks will be limited to two minutes. I have David Katz. All right, it looks like Mr. Katz is not here, so if there is anyone else who wishes to come down and testify on this bill, you may do so at this time. And once again, state your name and address for the record, and you'll have two minutes.
Good evening. I'm Kate Fox. I live at 3495 Olympia Road in Davidsonville, 21035. I am Chair of the Board of Growth Action Network of Anorundal County, ORGAN. We are a coalition of community and civic associations, environmental groups, and individuals involved in advocacy and citizen education with the goal of assuring that growth and development in Anorundal County is well-planned and will not harm current neighborhoods or the environment, is fiscally sound, and will enhance the quality of life for current residents. My testimony is on the most important points in extensive comments concerning Bill 63-22 submitted to the entire council on July 14. At the hearing on this bill on July 5, one of the stated purposes of the bill is to decouple adult independent dwelling units, AIDUs, from assisted living facilities, ALS. Additional testimony suggested that this type of housing would meet the missing middle, or help meet the missing middle, of housing in the county. This bill does not do either of these, however. AIDUs are already permitted uses, not conditional or special exception uses, in all residential districts per the use table in Article 18. Nor does the code contain any language indicating that AIDUs must be built in association with assisted living facilities. What this bill does do is increase density for properties zoned R1, R2, and R5 if they are developed as AIDU subdivisions with a few conditions on utilities and proximity to ALS or county libraries or community centers. GAN supports incentives such as increased density to build age-restricted housing, especially at many price points. However, there need to be safeguards, so this type of increased density is not abuse as it was in the Two Rivers subdivision. Before it was even built out, it was converted to non-age-restricted after schools in the area were open to development. Developers have acknowledged this option to at least one board member of GAN. GAN urges you to hold this bill so that amendments can be added that support the purposes for and advantages of this bill that were articulated at the July 5 council meeting or not pass it, so it can be rewritten. Thank you for your time, and have a good evening.
Thank you very much. At this time, the public hearing on Bill Number 63-22 as amended is now closed. Madam Secretary, please read the title of Bill Number 63-22 as amended.
Bill Number 6322, An Ordnance Concerning Zoning, Bulk Regulations, Adult Independent Dwelling Units.
This is Ms. Lacy's bill. Ms. Lacy, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam Chair. As we discussed two weeks ago, this bill is intended to decouple our current requirement that adult independent dwelling units are built in conjunction with and adjacent to an assisted living facility, and it provides three different ways to do that, by the idea of a radius within an assisted living facility, or a public library, or a community center. Happy to answer any remaining questions, and I hope I have your support on the bill.
Thank you. Mr. Barron, if you would like to respond?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I realize I don't think I introduced the panel on the last bill, but good thing we have the same panel. Our Deputy CAO for land use, Ms. Lori Rhodes. From OPZ, Ms. Lynn Miller. And from law, Ms. Lori Blair-Klausmeyer. I think we've commented on this bill a couple of times, it feels like. The administration, while we might have taken a slightly different approach in tackling this, the policy goal of this bill is important. There is a lack of options for our seniors, and we are supportive of the bill.
Thank you. Any questions from the council? All right, at this time, we will open the public hearing on Bill Number 63-22 as amended. Madam Secretary, do we have any testimony received from members of the public?
No, Madam Chair, we did not receive anything.
We also, oh, no, I apologize. We do have a person signed up. We will now invite members of the audience who signed up beforehand to address the council on Bill Number 63-22 as amended. When your name is called, please come down to the table, have a seat, state your name and address for the record, and your remarks will be limited to two minutes. I have David Katz. All right, it looks like Mr. Katz is not here, so if there is anyone else who wishes to come down and testify on this bill, you may do so at this time. And once again, state your name and address for the record, and you'll have two minutes.
I'm Kate Fox. I live at 3495 Olympia Road in Davidsonville, 21035. I am Chair of the Board of Growth Action Network of Anorundal County, ORGAN. We are a coalition of community and civic associations, environmental groups, and individuals involved in advocacy and citizen education with the goal of assuring that growth and development in Anorundal County is well-planned and will not harm current neighborhoods or the environment, is fiscally sound, and will enhance the quality of life for current residents. My testimony is on the most important points in extensive comments concerning Bill 63-22 submitted to the entire council on July 14. At the hearing on this bill on July 5, one of the stated purposes of the bill is to decouple adult independent dwelling units, AIDUs, from assisted living facilities, ALS. Additional testimony suggested that this type of housing would meet the missing middle, or help meet the missing middle, of housing in the county. This bill does not do either of these, however. AIDUs are already permitted uses, not conditional or special exception uses, in all residential districts per the use table in Article 18. Nor does the code contain any language indicating that AIDUs must be built in association with assisted living facilities. What this bill does do is increase density for properties zoned R1, R2, and R5 if they are developed as AIDU subdivisions with a few conditions on utilities and proximity to ALS or county libraries or community centers. GAN supports incentives such as increased density to build age-restricted housing, especially at many price points. However, there need to be safeguards, so this type of increased density is not abuse as it was in the Two Rivers subdivision. Before it was even built out, it was converted to non-age-restricted after schools in the area were open to development. Developers have acknowledged this option to at least one board member of GAN. GAN urges you to hold this bill so that amendments can be added that support the purposes for and advantages of this bill that were articulated at the July 5 council meeting or not pass it, so it can be rewritten. Thank you for your time, and have a good evening.
Thank you very much. At this time, the public hearing on Bill Number 63-22 as amended is now closed. Madam Secretary, please read the title of Bill Number 63-22 as amended.
Bill Number 6322, An Ordnance Concerning Zoning, Bulk Regulations, Adult Independent Dwelling Units.
Is there any further discussion from my colleagues? Ms. Lacy.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Ms. Rhodes, can you provide any comments on the testimony that we just received?
Lori Rhodes, Deputy Chief Administrative Officer for Land Use. I know trying to address policy through code when you're trying to provide housing options for a certain segment of the population can become very complex. I realize that this attempt has been going on in other areas of the code. In C2 and C3, we allow adult independent dwelling units as a conditional use with 22 dwelling units per acre. In the BRAC mixed use, you can also have this use with 15 dwelling units per gross acreage. So it's trying to, you're trying to achieve something that has been attempted through legislation elsewhere in the code. And so from a policy perspective, the administration supports the bill.
Any further questions or comments? Ms. Pickard.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just did want to, the issue and concerns regarding the flip of Two Rivers from age-restricted to regular market-rate housing and no more age-restricted, we have, since that happened, we have addressed the issue of school APF. So whereas if a school is open, previously, if there was one seat available in a school, you could build 2,000 houses. That is no longer the case with our school APF. Now, if you're, the number of seats that are open in that school at their state-rated capacity, you can only build 85% of those seats. So if you have, let's say, five seats, you can only build three, three units of housing. So we have already addressed some of the concerns. A lot of folks like to bring up the issue of Two Rivers and school capacity, and we've already just addressed it. So I think it's important to voice that when we're having housing discussions. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Pickard. I actually want to follow up on the Two Rivers issue. I wasn't in office at that time, but I did know about it, you know, from the perspective of a citizen and resident of Anorundal County. But my understanding is that it was actually Supreme Court law that kicked in that allowed that developer to, that it wasn't any sort of, if anyone can confirm that understanding that it was actually, because under current Supreme Court case law, if a property owner waits six years, and when APF hadn't been met, if they wait six years and it still is not met, they are allowed to go forward with their building because they do have land rights. And if there's anyone, actually perhaps from the Office of Law that could...
That's where I was going to direct that question.
I was looking around. We have all these lawyers up here, but we also have an Office of Lawyers.
Lori Blair-Klausmeyer, Deputy County Attorney. I was not directly involved with that, but I believe the six years is actually in our code that if, it's not necessarily, I mean, there's probably in there constitutional property right involved, but my understanding is I believe that is part of one of our code provisions on APF.
Thank you. Ms. Hare.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Jessica Hare, District 7. Along those lines, if, if the school APF, if it is open, if the school is open and there's adequate space, could a development convert?
Lori Rhodes, Deputy Chief Administrative Officer for Land Use. There are provisions in Article 17 that the developer would have to go through adequacy of public facilities, all of the property owners would have to sign, indicating that they would want that development to change, and they would have to follow all of the adequacy of public facility laws. So there's nothing in the code that would prevent a development from going from one type to the other, because it's, the code is organic, I mean, developments change, and those options are legally there for someone to change a development type from non-age to age, but they would have to go through the code process in Article 17, and all of the property owners would have to sign on for that change within the development.
May I ask one follow-up? Go ahead. Thank you, Madam Chair. I think this is a question for Office of Law. Would it be possible in a bill to put a restriction that a development built under this provision could not be converted? You know, they agree that it cannot be converted for X number of years after it's built.
I believe there is also, I, I'll take a look at that, I'm sorry. Lori Blair-Klausmeyer, Deputy County Attorney. I think that there is a restriction placed on the property when these age-restricted developments are developed. You're talking after they're built.
Yes, but I'm saying, Ms. Rhodes is suggesting... Ms. Rhodes is suggesting that it could convert if adequate public facilities is met. Is there something that, is it permissible legally to put a statement in the law that says it is not allowed to convert for, I don't know, 10 years, 20 years, whatever it might be?
I'm sorry, I thought her answer went to during the development process, but I'm...
No, they would have to go through the process to test for adequacy of public facilities. The plat would have to be amended. All of the owners within that development would have to agree for that change to take place.
Once it's built, okay.
Yes, once it's built.
I, I will certainly get back to you on that.
Okay, all right, thanks.
Mr. Pruski.
Madam Chair, just for the record, so we had a community that actually is in my council district that was looking to do that, and just imagine, when we have special taxing districts, we're lucky if we get 54% return. Try and get a whole community to flip, it's nearly impossible. So I'm not saying it's not, but I will tell you, meeting the adequate facility threshold and getting the people willing to do that, I just, I don't see it as a viable path. I understand the question is legitimate, but it just doesn't happen. Again, I don't even think they got to 30% for when they initially tried to do a petition with their homeowners association.
All right, seeing no additional questions, excuse me, questions, no additional lights. Madam Secretary, please read the title of Bill Number 63-22 as amended.
Bill Number 6322, An Ordnance Concerning Zoning, Bulk Regulations, Adult Independent Dwelling Units.
And Madam Secretary, please call the roll on Bill Number 63-22 as amended. Ms. Lacy.
Aye.
Ms. Pickard.
Aye.
Mr. Volkey.
Aye.
Mr. Pruski.
Aye.
Ms. Fiedler.
Nay.
Ms. Hare.
Nay.
Ms. Radveen.
Aye.
Five in the affirmative, two in the negative. Bill Number 6322 has been passed. Thank you. Madam Secretary, please read the title of Bill Number 64-22.
Bill Number 6422, An Ordnance Concerning Public Works, Heritage Harbor Condominium Phases 1 through 10, Water and Wastewater Petition Assessment Correction.
Thank you. Mr. Barron, this is another admin bill. You have the floor along with your panel.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Joining me is Ms. Henry and Ms. Clooney from DPW, and our Deputy County Attorney, Ms. Blair Klausmeyer, is hanging out with us. 6422 was discussed at last Tuesday's work session. If you recall that discussion in 2019, the community of Heritage Harbor petitioned the county to take over their water and sewer lines. Under the code at that time, the council was required to approve individual water and sewer assessment rates that homeowners would pay the county to take over their system. Now that, now that the county has bids on the project, the projected sewer rates are coming in higher than estimates, the water rates are coming in below the estimates. While the combined water and sewer rates homeowners would pay are less than those approved by council, the individual sewer rate is higher than the approved amount and doesn't meet the requirements of Bill 2319. In 2020, the council approved subsequent bills that allow the county to combine water and sewer assessments. The bill before you would rescind 2319 and instead rely on the combined water sewer assessment under the updated code language, which will allow the project to proceed. Happy to answer any questions you have, and we ask that you pass the bill today.
Any questions from my colleagues before we open the public hearing? All right, seeing no lights, we will now open the public hearing on Bill Number 64-22. Madam Secretary, do we have any testimony received from members of the public?
We did not receive anything ahead of time, Madam Chair.
Thank you. We didn't have anyone signed up to testify in advance either, but if there is anyone here who wishes to testify, you may come down to the table and have a seat, state your name and address for the record, and you will have two minutes. All right, seeing no takers, the public hearing on Bill Number 64-22 is now closed. Madam Secretary, please read the title of Bill Number 64-22.
Bill Number 6422, An Ordnance Concerning Public Works, Heritage Harbor Condominium Phases 1 through 10, Water and Wastewater Petition Assessment Correction.
Is there any further discussion, or any discussion? All right, seeing none. Madam Secretary, please call the roll on Bill Number 64-22. Ms. Lacy.
Aye.
Ms. Pickard.
Aye.
Mr. Volkey.
Aye.
Mr. Pruski.
Aye.
Ms. Fiedler.
Aye.
Ms. Hare.
Aye.
Ms. Radveen.
Aye.
Seven in the affirmative, none in the negative. Bill Number 6422 has been passed. Thank you. Madam Secretary, please read the title of Bill Number 65-22.
Bill Number 6522, An Ordnance Concerning Payment in Lieu of Taxes, Eagle Park Vista and Eagle Park Village, Jessup, Maryland.
Thank you. This is another admin bill. Mr. Barron, you and your panel have the floor.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Joining me is our Director at ACDS, Ms. Karpowitz, and joining her is Ms. Ebner from Finance. We have our Comptroller, Ms. McQuade, and Lori Blair-Klausmeyer is sticking with us. If you recall from the work session, we discussed this bill and the coming four bills all relate to payments in lieu of taxes. to payments in lieu of taxes. I will truncate some of my remarks from the work session on the full package, and then as we move through each of the items, I'll speak to each individual project. But the bills before you, this bill and the next four, are for four new affordable developments and one large preservation project. As we all know, there is an intense need for affordable units in the county. Each of these projects were analyzed individually. The recommended pilot amounts for each development were determined to be necessary to allow the project to carry additional debt to make the project financially feasible. The average pilot amount for this batch of requests is $255 per unit. Historically, the average pilot amount has been $188 per unit, and I know that sounds backwards, but this is actually the more conservative approach. So I'll leave it there, and I'll talk a little bit about 65-22, which is the Eagle Park Vista and Eagle Park Village in Jessup, Maryland. So the, this project is 150 per unit pilot, it's elderly and affordable units. It will be a 40-year pilot, 72 units for elderly, which will be restricted to 60% AMI, area median income, you'll hear Erin use that term a lot, and then 48 units for family, restricted to 37% AMI. Happy to answer any questions on this particular one, but we ask that you pass this bill tonight.
Thank you very much. Before we go any further, may I have a motion to hold a joint hearing on Bills Number 65-22, 66-22, 67-22, 68-22, and 69-22?
So moved.
Second, Allison.
Madam Secretary, please call the roll on the motion to hold a joint hearing on Bills 65-22, 66-22, 67-22, 68-22, and 69-22.
Ms. Lacy.
Aye.
Ms. Pickard.
Aye.
Mr. Volkey.
Aye.
Ms. Pruski.
Aye.
Ms. Fiedler.
Aye.
Ms. Hare.
Aye.
Ms. Radvian.
Aye.
Seven in the affirmative, none in the negative, the motion to hold a joint public hearing on Bill Numbers 65-22 through 69-22 has been adopted.
Thank you. So before we go on to that public hearing, Mr. Barron, if you'd like to comment on the other four bills.
Happy to.
Oh, we need to read them into the record, actually, before we do that. So hang on, Mr. Barron.
I'm hanging.
Madam Secretary, could you read those bills into the record?
Certainly. I already read Bill Number 65-22, so I will add Bill Number 66-22, An Ordnance Concerning Payment in Lieu of Taxes, Blue Oaks at North Odenton Apartments, Odenton, Maryland. Bill Number 67-22, An Ordnance Concerning Payment in Lieu of Taxes, The Villages at Marley Station, Glenbernie, Maryland. Bill Number 68-22, An Ordnance Concerning Payment in Lieu of Taxes, The Village at Little Patuxent, Gambrels, Maryland. Bill Number 69-22, An Ordnance Concerning Payment in Lieu of Taxes, Willows at Forest Drive, Annapolis, Maryland.
Thank you. And now I will hand the floor back over to Mr. Barron and his group of panelists to make any comments you would like on the other four bills that will be in that group.
Yeah, I'll give a quick overview to the council, just to note, on the next four, just to note, as I mentioned at the work session, the admin and Ms. Karpowitz and her team met with the auditor in advance of introducing these bills. We've provided, and in your packet, you should see a whole plethora of supporting documents. So if you don't have that, let us know, and we'll make sure you do. So same team is here, sticking with me. Blue Oaks at North Odenton is 66-22. This is another 40-year pilot for 150 affordable units. It is in Council District 4. 95 family units will be restricted to 60% AMI, and 55 family units restricted to 43% AMI. This project also includes nine market rate units. Going on to Bill 67-22, this is The Villages at Marley Station. As you all are aware, pilots, when ownership changes, the pilot does not continue. This is, The Villages at Marley Station has changed hands. It is 757 affordable units. We are issuing, are proposing to issue a new pilot for 40 years. This will preserve the 757 family units, which will be restricted to 60% AMI. So this is also comparable, the previous owner had a pilot, and this pilot is comparable, so it's, we're kind of keeping it moving forward under the, just under new ownership. 68-22 is The Village at Little Patuxent. That's 73 elderly, it's age-restricted affordable units, that is in Council District 4 in Gambrels. It'll be restricted to 53% AMI. And then, last but not least, is The Willows at Forest Drive. This is Bill 69-22. It is 58 affordable family units restricted to 32% AMI. Happy to answer any questions on any of the individual projects. Well, actually, I'm going to just turn it over to the experts if you have any questions.
Thank you very much. Before we move on to the public hearing, are there any questions or comments from my colleagues? All right, seeing none, we will now open the public hearing on Bill Number 65-22, 66-22, 67-22, 68-22, and 69-22. Madam Secretary, do we have any testimony received from members of the public on any of these five bills?
Yes, Madam Chair, there was one submission that was made ahead of time. It was submitted under Bill Number 65-22. However, the testimony is on Bill Numbers 65-22 through 69-22. That was shared with the entire council and has been added to the record. It's included in the summary that is also posted online.
Thank you. At this time, we will now invite members of the audience who signed up in advance to testify on Bill Number 65-22 through 69-22. And we do have one person signed up, so when your name is called, please come down to the table, have a seat, state your name and address for the record. Remarks will be limited to two minutes. Trudy McFall.
I'm Trudy McFall, 205 Scott Drive, Annapolis, Maryland, and I'm here tonight to speak on behalf of the Anarundel Affordable Housing Coalition, which I serve as the chair. And I think many of you, over the years, I've gotten acquainted of the 40-some years that I worked as an affordable housing administrator and developer in the county. So, and I'm here tonight, as much as anything, to say thank you. I think that we've done pilots in the county for several decades, and there's nothing particularly new, but what is new is the innovation that you've shown in recent years of the workforce housing and the senior housing, and the kind of provisions that have allowed more affordable housing to be proposed and to be viable in the county. And I think this evening represents this. I can't, I don't believe there was ever a time you saw five properties that were going to do 406 new units in the county, four properties, in lovely well-serviced areas, and redeveloped 757. So it's just, it's an occasion that I think the Coalition wanted to really come and say, it's a remarkable event, and I think it shows very clearly the relationship between innovation that you've displayed as a council and the administration in the production of housing, and therefore you have tonight the five pilots. And I think, really, that's all I wanted to say. I don't think that, I'm the expert to tell you about the individual pilots, and I think most of you know very well how pilots work. They give a stable amount of payment for services instead of fluctuating taxes, and they help fill financial gaps for affordable housing, all of which, all of these have been through the state process, and you know, they've been inspected from top to bottom and meet all of the requirements of the federal and the state, and also your local government, who also has reviewed them. So mostly, I just wanted to say thank you. Well done. The Coalition has been delighted to be your partners in recent times, and we look forward to more times to come and say thank you.
Thank you very much, and your very, very well-timed comments this evening.
Well, you have a lot to do.
All right. At this time, if there is anyone else who would like to comment or testify on any of these five bills, 65-22 through 69-22, you may come down to the table at this time. All right, seeing no movement in the audience, the public hearing on Bills Number 65-22 through 69-22 is now closed. To clarify, we will be voting on each bill separately. So Madam Secretary, please read the title of Bill Number 65-22.
How about I read all five titles?
Sure.
Oh, sorry, I'm trying to follow along here. Bill Number 65-22, An Ordnance Concerning Payment in Lieu of Taxes, Eagle Park Vista and Eagle Park Village, Jessup, Maryland. Bill Number 66-22, An Ordnance Concerning Payment in Lieu of Taxes, Blue Oaks at North Odenton Apartments, Odenton, Maryland. Bill Number 67-22, An Ordnance Concerning Payment in Lieu of Taxes, The Villages at Marley Station, Glenbernie, Maryland. Bill Number 68-22, An Ordnance Concerning Payment in Lieu of Taxes, The Village at Little Patuxent, Gambrels, Maryland. Bill Number 69-22, An Ordnance Concerning Payment in Lieu of Taxes, Willows at Forest Drive, Annapolis, Maryland.
Thank you. Is there any further discussion on any of these bills? Ms. Pickard.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just want to thank Ms. McFall for coming down on behalf of the Affordable Housing Coalition, and of course, I want to thank ACDS for working so hard to pull these together. I had the privilege to tour the 757 units in Glenbernie, and I'm excited to see the renovation that will happen there, including the refreshing of the amenities for the families that live there. It's extremely exciting to see those be revitalized and also being stabilized at the 60% AMI is extremely needed. And then the other pilots, there are a lot of penciling out these projects are extremely complicated, and this is one of the tools that are available, and I'm certainly excited to be casting my vote, aye, for all of these. 406 units is, as much as it's exciting to see five projects come through, 416 new units of affordable housing is a drop in the bucket compared to the 200,000, 300,000 households that are currently on the books here in Anarundel County, and especially with the 30-some-odd-thousand people on the waiting list for affordable housing with our Housing Commission. So these are much needed, they're going to be beautiful projects, and I wish the new residents well as they are afforded beautiful housing. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Pickard. I also would just like to add my thanks to all of the folks that have worked on this. I actually have no idea how you do it, but you bring these projects forward that, you know, meet such an important need in the county. My colleague mentioned the number of folks on the waitlist for various types of affordable housing, and it is enormous, and it's only been growing. So thank you for all the work that you do, and we get the easy job. All we have to do is vote yes, so I look forward to doing that. Ms. Lacy.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Just wanted to add, I agree with both my colleagues, I just wanted to add the point that as to Eagle Park Vista and Eagle Park Village, we had to do a bill in this council. I'm grateful that this council passed a bill that allowed that project to happen by converting what was in a mixed-use area supposed to be designated office, and office was not, not at all in demand in that area, and we were able to work out a way to convert that to. I think that's the senior housing portion of this project, and it's an area I go by every day, picturing the blank space being filled in with this housing and making a more vibrant community at this major intersection in the county. I'm really proud of the work that we've done on affordable housing, but this one especially, when you look back to what we did a few years ago, and here we are. So, thank you.
All right, seeing no additional lights, Madam Secretary, please call the roll on Bill Number 65-22.
Ms. Lacy.
Aye.
Ms. Pickard.
Aye.
Mr. Volkey.
Nay.
Ms. Pruski.
Aye.
Ms. Fiedler.
Nay.
Ms. Hare.
Nay.
Ms. Radvian.
Aye.
Four in the affirmative, three in the negative, Bill Number 65-22 has been passed.
Thank you. Madam Secretary, please call the roll on Bill Number 66-22.
Ms. Lacy.
Aye.
Ms. Pickard.
Aye.
Mr. Volkey.
Nay.
Ms. Pruski.
Aye.
Ms. Fiedler.
Nay.
Ms. Hare.
Nay.
Ms. Radvian.
Aye.
Four in the affirmative, three in the negative, Bill Number 66-22 has been passed.
Madam Secretary, please call the roll on Bill Number 67-22.
Ms. Lacy.
Aye.
Ms. Pickard.
Aye.
Mr. Volkey.
Nay.
Ms. Pruski.
Aye.
Ms. Fiedler.
Nay.
Ms. Hare.
Nay.
Ms. Radvian.
Aye.
Four in the affirmative, three in the negative, Bill Number 67-22 has been passed.
Thank you. Madam Secretary, please call the roll on Bill Number 68-22.
Ms. Lacy.
Aye.
Ms. Pickard.
Aye.
Mr. Volkey.
Nay.
Ms. Pruski.
Aye.
Ms. Fiedler.
Nay.
Ms. Hare.
Nay.
Ms. Radvian.
Aye.
Four in the affirmative, three in the negative, Bill Number 68-22 has been passed.
Thank you. Madam Secretary, please call the roll on Bill Number 69-22.
Ms. Lacy.
Aye.
Ms. Pickard.
Aye.
Mr. Volkey.
Nay.
Ms. Pruski.
Aye.
Ms. Fiedler.
Nay.
Ms. Hare.
Nay.
Ms. Radvian.
Aye.
Four in the affirmative, three in the negative, Bill Number 69-22 has been passed.
Thank you very much. All right, yeah, and thank you again to the panel for being willing to answer questions and all the work that you've done to get us here. All right, let's see, I need to skip a little bit forward ahead, and we are now on Bill Number 70-22. Madam Secretary, please read the title of that bill.
Bill Number 70-22, An Ordnance Concerning Public Safety: Security Measures for the Sale of Firearms, Effective Date Contingency.
Thank you. Mr. Pruski, this is your bill. You have the floor.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I want to thank my colleagues who prior supported the gun safety bill. As you know, it's a major concern right now. What ended up happening though is the General Assembly did the same thing, and it impacted every county, and both of those bills are under legal review. And essentially, this bill provides some effective contingency based upon what happens with the legislation. The law office contacted me, and again, I think Ms. Blair Klassmeyer would probably be better from a legal perspective to explain what it does, but again, this does not take away the bill. It's a contingency because of, again, the state appeal. As you know, I believe that safety at gun stores right now is of importance, considering what's occurring, but I'll let Ms. Klassmeyer give a little bit more info. Thank you.
All right, Mr. Barron and Ms. Klassmeyer, you have the floor.
I am joined by Ms. Klassmeyer. I'm going to let Ms. Klassmeyer give the legal opinion, but I do want to make a comment from the administration, just very briefly first. We don't like this bill. We passed a great bill here in the council, but we are a nation of laws, and there is the ability for folks to sue, and there's active litigation going on. This is the responsible thing to do, even if you don't like it.
Thank you.
Lori Blair Klassmeyer, Deputy County Attorney. So essentially, when this county council passed Bill Number 10921 for gun safety, it instituted a number of safety measures for gun shops within a certain distance of schools, parks, places of worship, et cetera. And thereafter, the General Assembly passed House Bill 1021, which added a section to the public safety article of the state code, which also imposed certain requirements for safety related to these gun sellers throughout the county, or actually throughout the state, as Mr. Pruski pointed out. There are not the exact same gun safety measures, however, they are similar in that there are measures related to preventing people from entering the stores and also having to secure the guns and ammunition within the stores when they're closed. So the, what this bill does is it provides that the county's law will be contingent, will, the county's law will be triggered only if the state law is repealed or found to be ineffective in any way. So the county law will still be on the books, it just won't be- So, the county law will still be on the books, it just won't be enforced or effective unless there's some, unless the state law is no longer effective.
Thank you for that explanation. I, I'm not sure whose light was first, so Mr. Volkey, I thought I saw yours out of the corner of my eye, so you may go first.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So, the county is actively in litigation where someone is suing, or some ones, I should say, are suing the county for the bill that was passed, 10921, right?
Over the validity, correct.
Right, over the validity of it, and whether we had the authority, and whether it's appropriate, et cetera.
Correct.
If this passes, then what effect does that have on the litigation?
So, we believe that it would make that litigation moot, and that would be the argument that we would make. There is a, a motions hearing, I believe it's scheduled in August, and that is the, if this bill passes, that is the argument that we would make, that it become, becomes moot, and the litigation is not required.
May I ask a follow-up?
Go ahead.
Thank you. And so, if we fail to pass this bill, then will that litigation continue, and we will get an answer on the underlying question of whether the county had the authority or not?
Correct. So, the, my understanding of the issue has to do with some of the language in the legislation, so it will tell us whether the language is valid. It doesn't mean that it could not be done in, in another way that would make it valid, it just had to do with the specific language of the enactment.
So, ultimately, people are using their constitutional right of redress through the court system to say the legislative branch may have done something the legislative branch can't do. They're in the judicial branch, asking that that determination be made, and then we're going to come back and take that away from the judicial branch and say, forget about it, this law is kind of out there, but it's not really in effect, and then it only kicks in if somehow the state law gets invalidated in a similar suit, which I think is pending as well.
I'm not overly, I'm not familiar with the state legislation, it's quite possible, because it is very similar to the county legislation.
Yeah.
Correct, but this is very similar to the trigger laws that we saw with Roe versus Wade that have been sitting on, in the laws of many states, waiting for Roe versus Wade to be overturned. So, these laws are, trigger-type laws are valid.
Okay. Thank you.
Ms. Feidler.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Amanda Feather, District 5. Same train of thought, Ms. Blair Klausmeyer. So, you said that if the, that this legislation would only go into effect if the state law were repealed, correct?
Correct. It's the law that, it's Title VI, Subtitle I of the public safety article, which was inserted through bill number 10921. That's the law that will sit there but not be effective or enforced unless the state law is found to be invalid or repealed.
May I ask a follow-up question? Go ahead. Thank you, Madam Chair. So, wouldn't we, unless we allow the judicial process to play out, would we run the risk of still being in the same predicament where the current case is, is moot if this passes, but then if there is a repeal at the state level and this kicks into effect, couldn't we end up at the same spot if there is a lawsuit for the county having legislation?
So, if this law was then triggered again and came back into effect, sure, we could be, there could be litigation again over this Title VI, Subtitle I. Yes.
Thank you.
Mr. Pruski.
Madam Chair, I just want to put on the record too, and again, maybe I took it differently by the questioning, that anybody can sue over anything, and we've seen that with many of our laws, including during COVID and other things, that doesn't mean it's valid, and particularly with the current court cases that we've seen at the national level and other things, I, I just want to be clear, it doesn't mean this, this law is valid, you may agree or disagree with it, but to be clear, you can take a lawsuit anywhere. So, I just want to make sure that's clear. And for the record, again, the bill passed, obviously, you know, the state went ahead with their bill, which would be statewide, which I think would be great, because guess what? If somebody doesn't have protections at a gun store in Anandale, they could bring a gun to Howard County and Baltimore County, and we've seen that. Actually, I just found out that a gun store in Baltimore County, one of the New York City police officers that was shot, that's where the gun came from, a stolen gun from a gun store. So, it doesn't matter where it is, and again, I think a statewide response was good by the General Assembly, but again, litigation could be found anywhere. Thank you.
Ms. Feidler.
I think Mr. Volkey might have had his light on.
Go ahead.
Okay. Thank you, Madam Chair. Amanda Feather, District 5. I do appreciate the, the conversation on this. I go back to the original bill that we passed, and at least for me, the concern I had was the council's authority to pass this legislation, so I'm actually interested in the judicial process, the judicial outcome, and what, what ability we truly have in this area, because I, I think that's a big question.
Mr. Volkey.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So, if the county is convinced that the law that the legislature passed us is valid and fully enforceable, why would we want to do this as opposed to just vigorously defend the county's law in court, win, keep the law on the books, and move forward? I guess I'm not quite clear on, if we're so solid in our legal positioning that what we did was absolutely right, why are we trying to find this sort of other path to move away? And I guess the, the other question that I would have is, to the extent that there is other litigation, why not just seek a stay in this case while the other litigation plays out, and then you come back and pending the outcome of that? You know, why wouldn't you seek that with the court?
I'll say initially, I'm not personally involved in the litigation, but I can see two reasons why. First of all, the, the whole notion of firearms, guns, handgun sales is heavily preempted. It's preempted federally, it's preempted state. We really can only legislate within 100, what we've done here with, what we did with one, bill 10921, within 100 feet of a park, house of worship, school, public building, or other place of public assembly under state law. So, that's really what, that doesn't even, that's not even countywide, that's just, you know, within 100 feet of those particular institutions. So, the state law obviously applies statewide, so it also applies countywide, so it's a much broader law. So, I can see saying, this will have a broader, the state law will have a broader effect, there's no sense having something within 100 feet of these things that's basically doing the same thing as what the state law does. Also, we did talk to the police department, because they were big advocates of the original legislation, and they are very satisfied that what the state has done is satisfactory for their purposes, they're happy with it, so they didn't feel the need to have this additional legislation out there for this 100-foot area in the county.
If I may, Councilman Volkey, I think pending the outcome of the litigation on the state level, it will show, if, if the state law, we believe, and, you know, we'll see how the courts decide, the litigation on the state law, if the, if House Bill 1021, I can't recall the citation, with the, that law is upheld, basically, our law has, is, it's not as good, if, in the administration's opinion. So, a better law was passed at the state because of what Ms. Blair Klausmeyer stated about preemption and, and some of the rules that we, I think, were threading a needle in, in Councilman Pruski's original bill, and so, it makes no sense to, to expend a bunch of resources at Office of Law if, if coming out of the state litigation, we expect and we hope, but we'll see, that the state law is upheld. So, why spend a bunch of county resources defending a county law that would be subsumed by a state law? So, our, our point of view is, you know, it'd be good if, if gun stores would secure their firearms from theft without regulation, but we needed to bring 10921, and we're glad the General Assembly followed behind us and, and did theirs. So, that's, I think, the, the rationale that at least my office went through as we looked at this bill.
All right. At this time, we will now open the public hearing on bill number 70-22. Madam Secretary, do we have any testimony received from members of the public?
Madam Chair, yes. There was a letter that was received ahead of time, a copy went to the entire council. It was not submitted through the online testimony tool, but it did come directly via email.
Thank you. We didn't have anyone sign up ahead of time to testify on this bill. However, if there is anyone here who wishes to testify, you may come down to the table and have a seat. When it is your turn, you'll state your name and address for the record, you'll have two minutes, and we'll be happy to hear from you. All right. Seeing no movement in the audience, the public hearing on bill number 70-22 is now closed. Madam Secretary, please read the title of bill number 70-22.
Bill number 7022, An Ordnance Concerning Public Safety: Security Measures for the Sale of Firearms; Effective Date Contingency.
Any further discussion? Seeing none, Madam Secretary, please call the roll on bill number 70-22.
Ms. Lacy.
Aye.
Ms. Pickard.
Aye.
Mr. Volkey.
Nay.
Mr. Pruski.
Aye.
Ms. Feidler.
Nay.
Ms. Hare.
Nay.
Ms. Radvian.
Aye.
Four in the affirmative, three in the negative, bill number 7022 has been passed.
Thank you. Madam Secretary, please read the title of Resolution Number 26-22.
Resolution Number 2622, Resolution Approving Estimates of the Annual Costs of Providing Health Insurance Benefits and the Employer Subsidies Used to Determine the Rates for Certain Participants Under the County Employee and Retiree Health Benefits Program.
This is once again an administration resolution. You have the floor, Mr. Barron.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I have our Personnel Officer, Ms. Podowski, and Ms. Lovett is joining us from Personnel. Our Deputy County Attorney is hanging around, I think we have you all night. And then we have our, our consultants here in the audience, who will, will be happy to answer any questions if needed, Mr. Pringle and Mr. Fow. So, Resolution 2622 is the estimate of total health care costs for the calendar year 2023 Plan Year, presented to the council today. As you recall, we discussed this during the work session, and as noted at the work session, every year, the Office of Personnel works with, with our consultants to, to determine the estimate of annual health care costs for each of our medical plans. They review claims data from the most recent previous calendar year, which would be 2021. They overlay assumptions, trends, pharmacy costs, I think they look into a crystal ball, and then they project the cost per plan for the upcoming calendar year. What Resolution 2622 reflects is the annual cost for the plans for 2023. This represents, it reflects, the cost before you reflect, a 6% increase in health rates resulting in part from inflation, increased utilization of medical care after the pandemic, and higher drug and therapy costs. So, prior to bringing this before you, our, our team at Personnel and our consultants met with our bargaining units and their representatives and their consultant, and they walked through the review process and how the county came to this decision, I'm sure, in great detail. So, we're happy to answer any questions, but we ask that you pass the resolution tonight.
Thank you. Any questions before we open the public hearing? All right. Seeing none, we will now open the public hearing on Resolution Number 26-22. Madam Secretary, do we have any testimony received from members of the public?
We did not receive anything ahead of time, Madam Chair.
Thank you. We also did not have anyone sign up ahead of time to testify, but if there is anyone here who wishes to testify, you may come down to the table and state your name and address for the record, you will have two minutes. Once again, seeing no movement in the audience, the public hearing on Resolution Number 26-22 is now closed. Madam Secretary, please read the title of Resolution Number 26-22.
Resolution Number 2622, Resolution Approving Estimates of the Annual Costs of Providing Health Insurance Benefits and the Employer Subsidies Used to Determine the Rates for Certain Participants Under the County Employee and Retiree Health Benefits Program.
Thank you. Last call for questions or comments. Seeing none, Madam Secretary, please call the roll on Resolution Number 26-22.
Ms. Lacy.
Aye.
Ms. Pickard.
Aye.
Mr. Volkey.
Aye.
Mr. Pruski.
Aye.
Ms. Feidler.
Aye.
Ms. Hare.
Aye.
Ms. Radvian.
Aye.
Seven in the affirmative, none in the negative, Resolution Number 2622 has been adopted.
Thank you. And once again, thanks to the panelists for being here and the consultants for being here as well to speak on behalf of this resolution. All right. Moving on, Madam Secretary, please read the title of Resolution Number 27-22.
Resolution Number 2722, Resolution Approving the Terms and Conditions of the Acquisition of Real Properties in Pasadena, Maryland from Dynasplint Holdings LLC, Utilizing Funds from the Advanced Land Acquisition Capital Project.
This is another admin resolution. Mr. Barron, you and your panelists have the floor.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Joining me from DPW is Mr. Burke from Central Services, our Director, Ms. Anderson, and Ms. Blair Klausmeyer down at the other end of the table. So, Resolution 2722, you, we talked about during the, the work session as well. It approves the purchase of properties totaling 14.54 acres in Pasadena for 8.5 million. The properties in question include two, almost two and a half acre parcel and a nearby block of land which comprises 14 contiguous parcels totaling a little over 12 acres. The county intends to construct our fire equipment maintenance facility on the property. As you recall from budget discussions, this has been a major need for the county to service our fire equipment, and we need a place to do it. The county's assessment, our independent appraisal of the properties was valued at 8.75 million, and so, we are proposing 8.5 here, so below that. Happy to answer any questions, and please pass this resolution tonight.
Thank you. Any questions before we have our public hearing? All right. Once again, seeing no lights, we will now open the public hearing on Resolution 27-22. Madam Secretary, do we have any testimony received from members of the public?
We did not receive anything ahead of time, Madam Chair.
And we also did not have anyone sign up to speak on this resolution, but if there is anyone here who wishes to speak on this resolution, you may come down to the table, state your name and address for the record, you will have two minutes. Once again, seeing no movement in the audience, the public hearing on Resolution Number 27-22 is now closed. Madam Secretary, please read the title of Resolution Number 27-22.
Resolution Number 2722, Resolution Approving the Terms and Conditions of the Acquisition of Real Properties in Pasadena, Maryland from Dynasplint Holdings LLC, Utilizing Funds from the Advanced Land Acquisition Capital Project.
Any further discussion? Seeing no lights, Madam Secretary, please call the roll on Resolution Number 27-22.
Ms. Lacy.
Aye.
Ms. Pickard.
Aye.
Mr. Volkey.
Aye.
Mr. Pruski.
Aye.
Ms. Feidler.
Aye.
Ms. Hare.
Aye.
Ms. Radvian.
Aye.
Seven in the affirmative, none in the negative, Resolution Number 2722 has been adopted.
Thank you. And once again, thank you to our panelists for sticking it out this evening, even though we didn't bring you any questions, we appreciate your presence and your willingness to answer them if we brought them. Madam Secretary, please read the title of Resolution Number 28-22.
Resolution Number 2822, Resolution Endorsing Financial Assistance from the Maryland Economic Development Assistance Fund to Catalent Inc.
Thank you. And once again, this is an admin resolution. Mr. Barron, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Joining me at the table from Economic Development is Mr. McQuillam and Lori Blair Klausmeyer from the Office of Law. We, we discussed this at the work session. Unfortunately, Mr. McQuillam was out, so I struggled through it. The, as you recall, we've, we've done a couple of these before, but just to remind you of the facts on, on this one, the Maryland Economic Development Assistance Fund, we all, we all call it MEDEF, don't you call it MEDEF? We call it MEDEF. They've provided a grant, so this is, the state has provided a grant to Calidet for $2 million to expand its manufacturing operations in the county. They're a global leader in biotech and consumer health fields, and they have requested the MEDEF funds to assist with the expansion of their manufacturing operation in the county. The funds would help cover a small fraction of the $190 million the company is committing to invest in expanding their operations here in our county. They intend to maintain the 204 current jobs at the facility and add an additional 700 They're a global leader in biotech and consumer health fields, and they have requested the MEDEF funds to assist with the expansion of their manufacturing operation in the county. The funds would help cover a small fraction of the $190 million the company is committing to invest in expanding their operations here in our county. They intend to maintain the 204 current jobs at the facility and add an additional 700 permanent full-time employees by the end of 2024. This resolution does not obligate any county dollars. It does, the requirements under the state program, though, from the Department of Commerce, do require a county, a 10% county match for funds distributed through MEDEF. AAEDC intends to provide the 10% or $200,000 through a workforce training agreement. Wes, if you have anything to add, please do it, otherwise, please pass this tonight.
No, nothing, Wes McQuillam with Economic Development Corporation, nothing to add, I'm sure you did a fine job in my absence, Pete. I do want to just clarify that this is a loan, and it is from the state. The conditions of the loan are that if the company does not produce the jobs and hire the amount of people they say they're going to hire, or if they don't invest the money that they say they're going to invest, it becomes a loan. If they do the things that they promised to do, that loan becomes forgiven, so it basically turns into a grant. But right now, as it's structured, it's a loan until they do the things they say they're going to do over a period of time. And we are doing a 10% match in the form of a workforce training agreement. This is typically what we do for these MEDEF deals. We feel it's a better way to go about it rather than just giving them a $200,000 grant. We feel like providing workforce training money, at the end of the day, it upskills our local workforce, and that's a good thing as well, so I urge you to pass this resolution tonight. And I do want to clarify also, if this sounds familiar to you, you passed a resolution supporting Paragon Bio Services, which was subsequently acquired by Catalent. The state never closed that loan because their numbers kept changing, because they kept hiring more people, and because they kept investing more money. The numbers on that loan changed, so the state never closed the deal, the numbers that we passed the resolution for last time. I begged and pleaded with Commerce to not come back before you to pass another resolution supporting this, but they required it because the numbers are different, so that's why we're here tonight. Thank you.
I think we're all glad that Wes was here.
All right. Are there any questions or comments before we open the public hearing? I actually just have one question. What line or what field of work is this operation?
So, it's a biopharma company. Essentially, what they do is they do a lot of research and testing for vaccines and for medicines. They have been able to cure a lot of really horrible diseases, and they've also, in that, in this facility, in Harmon's, have also produced some COVID vaccines as well. So, they obviously employ a lot of people, the average salary is very high. I think, you know, at one point, it was 80,000. I would imagine it's much more than that now, but it's a lot of scientists and really smart people that are doing really good work in this facility. So, we're really happy to have them. When they first came, I think the numbers were, they promised 45 million in capital investment, they wanted 150,000 square foot building, that turned into two buildings around 300,000 square feet, and then they acquired both of those buildings, purchased both of those buildings, and keep hiring and keep investing in the facility. So, we're, they're doing good work, and we're definitely happy to have them here in the county.
Thank you. Yeah, it sounds like they're really the best possible kind of business to have as your neighbor, so that's wonderful. All right. At this time, we will open the public hearing on Resolution Number 28-22. Madam Secretary, do we have any testimony received from members of the public?
We did not receive anything ahead of time, Madam Chair.
Thank you. We did not have anyone sign up ahead of time to testify either, but if there is anyone here that wishes to speak, you may come up to the table, state your name and address for the record. You have two minutes. Seeing no movement in the audience, the public hearing on Resolution Number 28-22 is now closed. Madam Secretary, please read the title of Resolution Number 28-22.
Resolution Number 2822, Resolution Endorsing Financial Assistance From The Maryland Economic Development Assistant Fund To Catalent Inc.
Any further discussion? Madam Secretary, please call the roll on Resolution Number 28-22.
Resolution Number 3022, Resolution Proposing An Amendment To The Charter Of Anarundel County To Make The Language Of The Charter Gender Neutral.
Mr. Pusky and Ms. Lacy, this is your bill. You may have the floor.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So, for those of you that stay up late at night and reading the charter, and also look at our Charter Review Commission, some of you may have noticed that chairman, chairperson, chair, it's really not consistent. So, from a legal perspective, again, this was brought forward that we kind of fix it and make the language gender neutral in the sense of how we identify many of the items in the charter. And again, this is just a cleanup, this was a recommendation by the Charter Review Commission, it's been brought up several before, and I hope I can get my colleagues' support. Thank you.
Oh, Mr. Barron, you may respond.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Just very, very briefly, I know it's the last one of the evening, so, as somebody who attended almost every Charter Review Commission, I know, and I can't, I think I've said this every time I've come to the table on one of these issues, the folks that, every single member of that group, and there were actually eight because somebody moved out of the county and somebody had to step up, really did a yeoman's task of pulling everything together, and this was one of the things that I think the group felt strongly about. I've talked to the county executive about it. This is just a simple thing to fix our charter, to make it reflect a more modern sensibility. So, it's the right thing to do, and we support.
Thank you. And before we open the public hearing, we will take comments or questions from my colleagues. Mr. Volkey, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam Chair. As somebody who does sit up at night reading the charter, I agree with you, Mr. Pusky, on everything you said, so I look forward to supporting this. Thanks for bringing this, and Ms. Lacy as well.
Thank you. I think Ms. Corby might as well. Stay up late.
Oh, I'm sorry. I was, I just need to wake me up.
There's probably a lot of folks that might not want to know, but we know they do. All right.
Excellent reading, Madam Chair.
All right. At this time, we will open the public hearing on Resolution Number 30-22. Madam Secretary, do we have any testimony received from members of the public?
We did not receive anything ahead of time, Madam Chair.
Thank you. We didn't have anyone sign up to testify either, but if anyone here wishes to speak, you may come down to the table, have a seat. When it is your turn, state your name and address for the record. You will be limited to two minutes. Last chance of the night. All right. Seeing no motion in the audience, the public hearing on Resolution Number 30-22 is now closed. Madam Secretary, please read the title of Resolution Number 30-22.
Resolution Number 3022, Resolution Proposing An Amendment To The Charter Of Anarundel County To Make The Language Of The Charter Gender Neutral.
I'll just make one comment. I think I mentioned this at the work session, that again, this is not something I lose any sleep over, but it really is nice to think about, we'll have inclusive language. So, you know, I just, it feels weird to be a chair man. I'm chair, chairwoman, or chair, or madam chair is always nice, so I really appreciate my colleagues bringing this forward. Seeing no additional lights, Madam Secretary, please call the roll on Resolution Number 30-22.
Ms. Lacy.
Aye.
Ms. Pickard.
Aye.
Mr. Volkey.
Aye.
Mr. Pusky.
Aye.
Ms. Fiedler.
Aye.
Ms. Hare.
Aye.
Ms. Radvian.
Aye.
Seven in the affirmative, none in the negative, Resolution Number 3022 has been passed.
Thank you. Is there any other business to be brought before the county council at this time? Hearing none, may I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second, Allison Pickard.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The motion carries. Our meeting is adjourned. The county council will be in recess for the month of August. We will meet on September 6, 2022, at 7:00 p.m. for our next legislative session. Have a wonderful and safe summer, and don't forget that tomorrow is our primary election, so if you have not voted yet, V O T E, vote, vote, vote. Polls are open from 7:00 a.m. until 8:00 p.m., and we will see you in September.